Meeting and all through our life, you think we're asking Christ's name. Amen.
Welcome everybody out tonight. One thing we're gonna do after we approve the minutes and the bills and stuff, we're probably gonna go out of order a few minutes and go into a quick closed session. I know maybe he's got some scheduling issues he needs to work around and we want to try to accommodate him and but it won't be very long, I promise. We're gonna leave Kevin out here.
I make a motion we approved the minute.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with a "a". Post same. And next item is the bills.
I make the motion, we pay the bills.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with a "a". Post same. That motion passes.
Ma'am?
Yeah, please.
Let's go to a closed session.
Second.
Y'all have fun.
Did have closed session, of course, no business was conducted, so we just had a motion in a second to come back in an open session. Uh, we can go ahead and do that if you want to and get that.
I make a motion that we allow our workers to donate three days instead of two days of their sick times.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Now, there is something there, right, they have to have a minimum of so many days before you're allowed to do that. And that's already in the, that's in there now, all we're doing is changing the number from two to three. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with a "a". Post same. Motion passes. Okay, let's go back to old business, there is nothing under old business, so new business, first item is hiring a new sanitation laborer.
Yes, I asked that we hire a Carl Rempro at the sanitation department, starting at ten fifty going to eleven dollars an hour every twenty days.
Make a motion.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with a "a". Post same. That motion passes. Next item is water loss report.
Uh, yes, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one water loss report, uh, actually has some pretty good numbers, uh, last year we were at five point eight percent water loss, uh, this year it actually dropped to four point seven. Uh, the state of Kentucky said anything under fifteen percent is a fairly well running water system. Uh, we purchased ninety-four million from the county, we pumped twenty-seven million from the whales, uh, we sold a hundred sixteen million to the customers. Also with that numbers, uh, wastewater side, we, uh, we pumped two hundred sixty-one million gallons of waste to the regional serve, we sold a hundred sixteen million of it to the customers, uh, which put us at fifty-five percent billing, which was actually thirty-eight percent down last year. Or at, yeah, up, up thirty-eight percent to fifty-five percent, so it sounds really good, we, we actually.
We're getting that under control.
For our audit, you will see the numbers always want to look good, but also keep in mind twenty twenty one started driving. So, uh, the last couple of years it's been running one to three gallon, for every one gallon we bill, we, three gallon we send, this year it's a one to two ratio, so we've, we've done well, or better, I should say.
Okay. John, I'll let you go ahead and jump in here if you want to go now and then.
Yes, it will.
Because I knew you, I'm sorry about the delay.
No problem. Uh, I think I, every month as a leader, we present every year, per call, and thank the B M City Council for supporting our B M Farmers Market, uh, it's really appreciated. Just a quick rundown, we had our second largest, largest year as far as dollar wise we've ever had in the market, and we were running on a record pace on about the second week of July, and then that surge of COVID hit us from about there to September, uh, cut out our customer base, also cut out some of our vendors because I tell vendors, don't worry about competition, because the more vendors we have, the better the market does, and always, that's just the way it works out. But, uh, uh, so I want to thank you for that, we had about fifty-four hundred people, uh, attend our market last year on a rough count, so that's pretty much a point of people, not only from bigger town, but from county, surrounding counties that came through, so that was our rough ca, customer count for last year. And so, uh, the presentation I've got tonight is our grants, it's the same grants we apply for every year, from C F A, Community Farm Alliance, Kentucky Double Dollars Grant, C F A Market Manager Support Grant, Market Bank for their fifty fifty match, and then the Kentucky Department of Agriculture Advertising Grant. The maximum if we received a whole of the grants would be three thousand, that would be the cost to the, um, to the, to the city, that would be whatever the batch of grants were, I think last year was around maybe twenty-three hundred, but we also brought in, uh, about nine hundred and fifty dollars worth of vendor fees down there, so ended about twelve thirteen hundred, so we're asking permission to do this and then ask the city to support our grant in that amount.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
I think it's a wonderful.
We have a motion in a second, those in favor, signify with a "a". Post same. Motion passes. And I will say the Farmers Market played a role in this award that the city won last week with the Governor's Award for the Arts because of the, they had a grant through the Arts Council a couple of years ago and started incorporating arts in with the market, and once the grant season ended, they continued to do that every year with it and had a lot of success, so we appreciate that.
And, and I will tell you that Debbie's already started, uh, we started a program last year called Gypsy Vendor Days, where every second Saturday, uh, we brought in, they're not, actually not vendors from the market, but they surrounded the market with crafts and handmade goods and, uh, food trucks, and she's already put out leakers for that, and she's already got several, um, I'll take probably seven, eight, nine, ten feedbacks from that, people are interested in coming in on those second Saturdays.
I think that's wonderful.
She already has, so a lot of entertainment already lined up for this year, and she's got a few days she's working on, but, so we've already, already begun that for next year.
And they're fixing to erect a grain bin down there.
Yeah.
For the, part of tourism's doing that with one they're doing on the amphitheater, but they had another, a smaller grain bin to do like for a performance area or something, you know.
Really?
Ms. Debbie thought that would go good with the Farmers Market. So, we were able to get that done, so that should be done sometime April or May.
I love the Farmers Market and so many people love it, you rarely see me out there because I am not a morning person, if you all had like a brunch afternoon market, that's a little more my speed, but I promote it and love for people, I love to see everybody that enjoys it so, so, so very much.
Our farmy table, we got to have it again last year, and we drew about two hundred and fifty people there, it's always a big event, we have it at the high school, and we barely got that under the wire before that, they kind of shut things down again for a while, right after that, but, um, we always eat pretty well, don't we?
Eat real well. All right, thank you, John.
Thank y'all.
Jimmy, anything?
No.
I don't think today.
Nope, my department's power approval is self-sustaining.
Kevin?
This is the last month, I'll be quiet, so I mean, I got it, because next month's gonna be pickleball, so just get ready.
Kevin, Larry, anything?
Uh, yes, update on the, uh, well, down at Danny Overton's, they, the state required another pump test done, uh, they done pump test at a hundred and five gallon a minute, which we knew would not pass and did not, the best that the state probably let us do is pump fifty-five gallons a minute versus the seventy-five that was anticipated, uh, the paperwork is gonna be submitted at the end of this week.
Why did they not let us?
They're all down, they, I guess there's a new ruling that you've got to have a pump test done at thirty percent capacity of what you're seeking, which we were seeking the seventy-five, so they, they wanted the test done one on five, uh, so the static level and the residual level failed too far, too fast, so it sets everything back to fifty-five gallon a minute, what we're probably gonna be allowed to pass, which is still gonna put, it's still gonna put about seventy-nine thousand gallon a day, about two point three million for the month, uh, that's gonna take us off the, that's gonna take us off the thirty or thirty-five percent less dependent from the county, back down to about twenty-five percent, so.
You're gonna do what now?
We will be buying, at seventy-five gallon a minute, we had anticipated, we was gonna buy thirty to thirty-five percent less water for the county per month, going to fifty-five gallon a minute is only, is gonna take it down to twenty-five percent less purchasing.
Okay.
Uh, update on the moisture water meter measure change out, we're about a, about thirty percent done with that, uh, we read meters today, we're doing rereads tomorrow, then we'll get fired up again on changing them, uh, it's kind of a hit and miss with the weather and what else is going on, uh, perfect timing for us because we are a little slow this year, this time of year, but it's also winter, so.
How many are you at, like, doing?
Uh, about nine hundred and fifty.
Should take too long.
Well.
Compared to what you already done.
That's right, that's right. Slowly for sure.
Well, the neighbor called, said, what have you got laying out your yard for, is that they're changing your meter out, ma'am?
I want to know who chose that color of blue to put on the, uh.
Well, that's actually, you know, through the eight one one, you know, water blue or green.
What the heck is that in New York?
Water lid, some of the hard ones that we, you know, we have our time finding, we just go ahead and paint, that way you can see it visible.
Okay, is that all you got?
That's all I have.
Okay, I got two things real quick and then we'll turn it over to, uh, Mike and David. I'd like to ask permission from this commission to advertise for an R F Q for rental of the old Gaither building. I've had several people express interest in it, but I, I told Larry, I said, you know, we really want to kind of watch what goes in down there with being on Second Street, with the, all the activities and stuff we're doing and with some of the stuff we're looking, the mix we're trying to get in down there, you know, you never know who might have a good idea of something and let them come to us, instead of us saying, okay, we got a building for rent, X amount of dollars a month, let them come to us and tell us what they would like to do with it, what they would like to do to the building and how much they're willing to pay for it, just to see what kind of response we get.
I moved, uh, advertise for R F P for the Gaither building.
You said R F Q.
Uh, it's R F P, I wrote R F Q, I'm, I'm doing an R F, we're working on another R F Q for another project, so.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with a "a". Post same, that motion passes. Another item I have, we've talked about it for some time and needed it at one point here, so I just want to head and ask for some quotes, we've been talking about putting an eighty-five inch monitor on the wall where we can hook into computer, whether it's either wireless or hardwired for presentations or whatever, and I got two quotes, and, uh, one of them is from Taylor, T and E L L C, which is Dwayne Taylor, his includes an eighty-six inch four K U H two smart TV, the Echo Gear Full Motion Wall Mount Bracket, Bluetooth Soundbar Subwoofer, HDMI four cable and VGA converter, labored install and setup, uh, install electrical outlet, he's gonna put the electrical outlet behind the TV so it won't have cords showing, uh, he's gonna install all the HDMI wire to this corner over here where the, all the controls will be at, and again, all the wiring and stuff will be hidden and not, not visible, and then install the VGA to HDMI converter, so there's, some of the computers have the bigger cables and some of them have the littler cables and then there's some that are wireless, so we'll be able to take care of everything. His quote was three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-four cents, and I got one from Voyage Technology, uh, Andy sent this to me, I have, was sent email back to him on variety requests and some more information, first of all, he sent, he sent it and he failed to put the installation on there, but then I asked him to make sure the installation included all this electrical outlet hidden, all the wiring hidden, and I didn't hear back from him and I sent a request again today, told him I needed to know by five o'clock today, and I still haven't heard back from him. But their quote is for the L G, which I think is the same unit actually, L G eighty-six inch four K H U D, uh, smart TV, uh, the HDMI wireless, B Y O D presentation switch, uh, an Apple TV four K, do you know what that is?
It might be, it might be part of the smart TV, it might be.
Okay.
Or, or it's, uh, it's a total device.
It looks like a little remote.
Yeah.
With a little box.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Specialty cave, cable, a wall plate for HDMI and an extra large heavy duty sixty to a hundred inch, uh, hanger for the TV, wall mount, and then they've got a installation, configuration of provided equipment and user training, uh, their total bid was three thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. And like I say, I'm not clear if that includes all the electrical and cable stuff or not.
Did it give you insulation, uh, time, timeframe?
No.
I know I've got Cole Taylors to do some work, sure, if you can't get him to do some electrical wiring for July, keep that by far behind.
He did ask me if we did it, well, I care if he did it on a weekend, I told him that didn't bother me.
If I tell that I did do, he backed up.
I'm not sure, and again, I don't know enough about, about it. On Taylor's, it talked about the, uh, cable and VGA converter and this one doesn't on Board, it just talks about.
I think that Apple does that, I think so, doesn't it?
Most of them will allow some sort of screen mirroring.
So they put one in church and that's what they use for.
Okay.
There's, there's a thousand different ways to do it.
Well, see, that's what I was suspecting.
But for what you're talking about, he would probably, like, what he was saying about having it all set up over there would be the way you want to do it, because even if you could do it wireless way, you're still gonna be.
You still gotta have some kind of equipment and stuff.
Yeah, because not everybody's gonna be able to do it, not everybody's gonna have their own computer and stuff.
Yeah, that's why I said, I wanted to be able to do wire and, wired in and wireless, so. So that's what we've got, but I do think the need is there and we do have the funding to take care of it. And I'm good with either one of them, I make no difference to me, so, y'all, tell me what you think.
Do you feel that we need to wait until we get clarification for the one bid or? Anybody thoughts, opinions on that or what?
I would like to know, that's why I asked Andy Friday and then again today when I didn't hear from him.
You should have called him, he'll tell you.
Well, I talked to him first and he's the one who put me off with Andy and.
If you told him he ain't got back to you, that's what I'm saying, he ain't got back.
So in other words, we've had one group that wasn't interested in getting back with us?
Well, he just hadn't gotten back with me yet, I don't know, I don't, he may not even be in town, I don't know.
The bids aren't that far apart either, are they? Two hundred dollars or something like that?
Less than two hundred dollars, yeah.
Hey, Dave, you're very familiar, just let y'all make that two.
Well, I wish there was verification on it, if it was all the same, then I would take the low bidder no matter what, but I don't, I don't.
Well.
I don't know, you know, we can make the motion that if everything's the same, take the lower, I'm fine.
Then find out. Get the clarification.
If we get the clarification and the lowest bid, then we take the lower bid. If not, then see what the price difference is with the other, and still take the lowest bid, but make sure we got all that in there.
Making sure it's applesavers.
Is that, is it okay if I do that as a motion?
I'm good with it, because I, I, I'm not too worried about either one of the vendors, I mean.
I'm not, I don't care about either one of them either, I mean, they're both good, I don't, I don't, I've had dealings with both of them, they've both done me good, so I don't have a problem with it.
And this may have everything in there, I just.
Again, I, that's what I'm saying, I just, like I said, I'd like clarification, but.
I would kind of think it, I don't know.
We move on, Georgia, back to notation, I excuse myself from the meeting for this one, I don't want to have this one to be involved.
He's outside in the parking lot.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
No, I don't think we have a second, I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with a "a". Post same. Thank you all very much, I think this is something we get a lot of use.
I think it'd be a very good thing to have.
And it's been something we've needed, we just.
For the community, it will probably use it, but we're more having that availability.
When we have the veterans program on, on Memorial Day, Labor Day, Memorial Day, which one is it?
Memorial.
Memorial Day, they'll use it, I'm sure, I mean, I could see who'd use that.
Well, even if it's just the background with.
Exactly.
I mean. Okay, Mike and David, y'all can arm wrestle over, who goes first?
Is it age before beauty or what is that?
All right, so what we have is the twenty twenty-one annual report, uh, first, kind of letter, for me, you guys can read that, I'll kind of go over this pretty quick. So the first set of graphs, kind of a breakdown, first type of run per year comparison from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, um, you can see we had a big increase in runs this year from three hundred and ten in twenty twenty to seven hundred and eighty-two in twenty twenty-one.
What do you attribute that to?
Uh, a lot of COVID, uh, people trying to get out and out before things are going on, um, there was a lot unknown to the fire service and COVID, people were, it's for us, guys being trained in proper equipment, so there's a lot of runs we didn't respond to in twenty twenty, um, we kind of took a backseat to some of it, let EMS kind of handle it all, um, now that we've kind of got the training and equipment and stuff up the floor, we're able to respond and handle it a bit more, especially now we understand it more. Of course, then there's a breakdown, so there's seventy-three percent of the calls we respond to were medical.
Twenty twenty, nobody went anywhere, did anything, so they got Carter, twenty-one, they.
Yeah, there was a lot more people, lot, lot more people out, a lot more things going on, a lot more activity, and then, of course, everything was in full swing, when people started going, we had the big spike in COVID, so we had a big increase in people being sick as well, too, so. The next one kind of breaks down our fire responses between structure fires, vehicles, brush and rubbish, and then fire alarms and false signals, it's, when you look at it, it's pretty well, almost twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five on how that was. The next one's kind of a breakdown of vehicle accidents, shows ones with injuries, ones without, we did have two fatalities this year and one boating accident, uh, fatalities are down to one, I think in twenty twenty we had three, that we were. The next one shows then.
I don't mean to interrupt, but those, those were out of the city.
Yes, and no fatalities inside the city. The other responses are, here's the breakdown, ma'am, we had nine gas leaks or hazmat calls, four down trees, five down power lines, and one weather event, which was a hurricane charge.
That counted for more than one, didn't it? Should have. Y'all were out a while.
Yeah, we were about thirty-six hours, I think is what we spent on that one. The next graph is a breakdown of what calls were inside the city limits and what were outside based on type of call, um, our biggest thing was medicals, of course, and the biggest amount of calls for medical was inside the city limits, with four hundred and forty-two medicals inside the city limits and a hundred and thirty outside. The last page is kind of a breakdown per department, so the rest of departments in the counties, um, Beaver Dam run thirty-nine percent of the calls that were paid out from departments within Ohio County, that's seven hundred and eighty-two, the next closest department was Hartford with four hundred and twenty-eight, and that's total calls.
So what do you attribute that to? They have two stations.
To be honest with you, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the factor is, I mean, as far as the type of runs we get paid out on, everybody across the county's the same. We have one standard guideline for all fires, or all fire departments, we all follow the same.
Is Beaver Dam's area that much bigger than Hartford's?
Not really.
It's not as big, is it?
Hartford has more ground, I think what a lot of it is, is probably our population, because if you look back, our medical calls inside the city alone was four hundred and forty-two, their total calls were four hundred and twenty-eight, so we had more medical calls inside the city limits of Beaver Dam than the second apartment did overall ones, so I think a lot of it is just kind of due to the population density, like Hartford's got a bigger area, but a lot of it's found ground, and about north of Hartford, and all them areas, and then out sixty-nine, most of it's just open ground. Any questions?
Did a good job.
Appreciate everything you do.
Return her to the second page, it just kind of gives you a breakdown of, uh, what each officer worked, uh, accidents were, cases opened, uh, we had three thousand four hundred and twenty-eight calls for services up on, up here, DUIs, we had thirty, uh, the only difference I see this year and last year is our alcohol went to twenty-three and our drugs went to seven, it was about fifty-fifty for the last other year, uh, this went to twenty-three and seven, uh.
Well, that's really not surprising, is with an extra officer now and.
And we got another officer.
Another officer on, I mean.
Right, uh, our warranty, uh, for the hundred sixteen served, uh, normally it's two seventy-five, three hundred, again, COVID got in there, uh, we got to a point there for a while, we didn't know whether to arrest them or just give them a pat on the back and send them on their way, because the jail wouldn't, didn't want to take them, and I'm not blaming the jail, but.
Right.
They didn't want to take them, uh, so there was no use of us to arrest them, then have to call the judge and get them unarrested, uh, unless it was a serious felony charge, you know, rape, something in that line, that was serious, uh, you know, we served, we did some, uh, wrote them criminal summons, even, to appear in court, uh, then it's got the drug related, it's got marijuana, meth, trafficking marijuana, trafficking meth, and, uh, then six hundred and ten traffic stops, uh, but if you look over on that next page, it's, uh, the next two pages, I could just kind of break down, uh, and give you an idea like speeding, you know, a hundred and twenty-seven, uh, if you're just a little bent over there, there's, there won't show up again, a hundred and sixteen, uh, when I say down toward the bottom, terroristic threatening, which is ten, so it just gives you kind of an idea of what was, uh, the charges were, uh, on those two, next two pages, and others, the others are just, uh, some charts that you can look at, but if you look over, it's about the, it's, I think it's like the six from the back, it's, uh, got the accident summary, uh, it's broke down, uh, the accidents are still pretty much the same, uh, we had two hundred and eight, that's what we worked, and it, every year it's from two five, two oh five to two fifteen, every year, just pretty much regular framework.
And it's pretty much in the parking lots, isn't it?
Yeah, seventy-six in parking lot, seventy-two, sixty-two and two thirty-one, thirty in city streets, ten out on West Kentucky Parkway, and, uh, twenty from Walmart to McDonald's, and we always try to throw that in there, uh, we had a hundred and seventy-nine non-injury, twenty-nine injury, no fatal in the city, uh, happy to report that, and then we always put from Walmart to McDonald's, uh, there was fifteen without injuries and five with injuries, so that gives you a little idea of that, uh, and the rest of, uh, it's pretty much just graphs that y'all can look at yourself when you, when you got time, uh, we did have cases that were worked, a hundred and fifty-five cases, uh, a hundred and forty-five of them were closed, most of those that wasn't closed, I, I know of one burglary, burglary that wasn't, a robbery out at, uh, I D A South here, uh, it wasn't and probably never will be, uh, and the others are identities that, that somebody's got somebody's identity and used it in California or something, where you're, you're never gonna saw those, so that's, that's pretty much what the open cases are, but if you want to go over sometime and get any questions, just call me or get any questions now, you know, let me know.
Like, I do have one, do you see any, have you all had any issue with, uh, I know there was this big thing last year in a lot of your bigger cities, especially out west and in the, some of the bigger cities about defunding police and anti-police, have you all seen any of that?
We, Eddie, is that here? Good Bob Copf, there, right?
Just what?
Good Bob Copf, there, right?
Well, he doesn't count. Well, he doesn't count.
No.
But you've not had any, Cairns, when you pull them over, the yell action?
No, we've had any negative for that part, I haven't heard any here in the city, or anyone around here, you know, Bob's always.
Man.
Y'all, we're gonna defund y'all, well, you're gonna be, I tell you, you're gonna be the last one we come to and tell them you need it.
Well. He'll start following around and checking his feed and all that.
Yeah, if we don't, don't leave him alone, I'll screw his house up, sell him.
Does anybody have anything else?
Is Brad giving you anything?
The motion to.
I've got, I've just got right in to ask him, I guess I should. I very well speak out. Entertaining motion to, John?
I've made it.
No, thank you.
I'm ready, my PJs are calling.